Recording in progress.
Ree, is the Zoom portion of this meeting started? We're calling the meeting to order.
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the June 20th, 2023 meeting of the North Bend City Council to order. I will be serving as mayor pro tem at tonight's meeting. Can the clerk please confirm the role?
All council members are present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will the clerk please lead us in the flag salute? The next item is the consent agenda.
Before you move on to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull two items on the agenda, the consent agenda, AB 23-072, AB 23-073, the main agenda to review.
That sounds fine. We'll move them to the main agenda to items number 12 and number 13.
I made a motion. You need to get a second.
Motion approved.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is unanimous. Citizens' comments. At this time, if you would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight.
Point of order, Your Honor, point of order. I still believe we have to approve the consent agenda after the modification.
I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Alan, stop tripping her up so early. Be nice.
I apologize for that.
And the motion moves seven to zero. Citizen comments. At this time, if you would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, we would invite you to come forward if you were attending in council chambers, or to indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you are attending remotely. We will start with those attending in council chambers first, and then move on to those attending remotely. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
So I'm here to talk about two things today really quickly. We have formally leased our first home in North Bend for North Bend Art and Industry, and we're holding an open house this Saturday from four to seven. And the ribbon cutting is at 4:00 PM. I'd love to see you guys all there for our official ribbon cutting. We will have over 16 artists, and art, and music, and beverages, and snacks. And you can see the space, as well as some borrowed space that we're using from one of our neighbors next door. So again, we're pretty excited about it. It gives us a chance to hold more classes, increase our programming, change our age group that we program for, and helps us to grow into our next space, which we have our eyes on. So I'm going to hand out invitations. The second item that I wanted to talk about is a new event. In collaboration with the Snoqualmie Arts Commission, the Train Museum, and North Bend Art and Industry, we are planning a Train Art Festival. So September 23rd this year is going to be our first one. It's going to be called Off the Rails. Does that surprise anybody? So at both of the parks, on either end of the train tracks, we're going to be holding small art festivals. So we'll be using William Henry Park here in North Bend. They'll be using their Snoqualmie Park. At their end, it will be mirror images with food trucks, food, music, and artists in booths sharing their art. So it should be a fun event. I'm looking for some support from our city. I'd like to be able to include reaching out to our businesses to have them offer maybe some special discounts for participants for that day. Just a heads up, September 23rd, it's coming up. I'll have more information soon on that. And that's it. Am I within my three minutes? Do you have questions?
Thank you so much. Very exciting.
Thanks for having us.
Ree, are there any attending via Zoom that would like to speak?
Not at this time.
Thank you. My apologies.
That's fine. Beth Burrows, 312 Northeast Sixth Street, North Bend. And I am just here on behalf of the Downtown Foundation and as a small business owner in town, I want to compliment the Public Works Department on how awesome our downtown is looking. We have the beautiful flower baskets and the plant containers, and when you guys put out the flags, it looks great. So I'm just here to say thank you for helping our downtown look great. So, thank you.
Anybody else in chambers? We will now move on to commission and committee reports. Mary, would you like to give a report on community and economic development?
I would love to, making mayor pro tem. Get my page together. Okay, CED met today, the 20th of June, just one day before the official opening of summer, of course, at 3:00 or 3:30 here at the German Room in the City Hall. We had four items on our agenda. We began with DCG/Watershed Professional Services Agreement. We spoke into that. It was a fairly short, inconcise conversation, and we went forward. The second on our agenda was the building code update discussion. That you'll be seeing back, or more towards September, so we'll have more information for you then. We talked about the design streets work-study discussion. We talked into that a little bit there. And then finally, we ended up talking about the tour for finished projects within the North Bend area for council to enjoy. We haven't quite come up with a date on that yet. So we will next meet on July 18th. And that's all. Thank you.
Alan, Finance and Administration.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our Finance and Administration Committee met on June 13th, 4:00 PM, at the City Hall German Room. We discussed two items that we are going to review. Both, I think, are positives. The Train Depot lease agreement and the museum lease agreement. We also talked about the separation agreement and discussed transaction plans for finance with David. And then we talked about the payment to Si View Metropolitan Parks. And that is all we talked about, housing meeting.
Thank you. Jonathan, Public Health and Safety.
We did not meet this month. We will have our next meeting, first week, well, actually, maybe not even the first week of July. We'll have to figure that one out. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Ross, Transportation and Public Works.
Thank you, Your Honor. We last met on May the 23rd at the City Council Adjournment Room. We discussed a resolution accepting a bill of sale for the Cedar Landing Platte Phases One, Two, and Three. Tom Moore gave us an update on the construction contract with Fury Site Works for the Stilson Avenue Southeast Capital Project Transportation Plan Award. Also, Dan Marsinko told us about an FHWA grant for Tanner Trail Extension Project, which was successful. Tom Moore and Mark Regos talked a little bit about the six-year transportation plan, which we're going to discuss more this evening. And there was a resolution to approve inter-local agreement amendment between the City and Si View Metropolitan Parks District for the Tenant Trailhead Parks Phase One, and that, of course, will be discussed later tonight as well. Our next meeting is going to be on the 27th in the Adjournment Room at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
The next is from me about our work study. We had our last council work study on May 23rd in our council chambers at 7:00 PM. We talked about different options for the future design of William H. Taylor Park, AKA The Train Depot, and the Riverfront Park, AKA Walk Along the River across from Bartels. It was decided to bring these concepts to the community to get their input. We also discussed EDAP housing options. That's it. Thank you. Rebecca, Planning, Parks, and Economic Development Commission Reports.
Thank you. The Planning Commission last met on May 17th to review and discuss the scope of work for the 2024 Plan Update, as well as the recent state legislation affecting land use planning. The Planning Commission was invited to join the City Council for the OPM training on June 27th for their next meeting. The Parks Commission last met on May 24th and conducted a city park tour to discuss potential capital improvements, identify maintenance needs, and prepare recommendations for maintenance needs and capital improvements. The Parks Commission will next meet on June 28th, which will include continuing the city park tour. The Economic Development Commission last met May 23rd. The Commission reviewed the timeline for updating the economic development element of the comprehensive plan. BDC will next meet on June 27th to continue work on that economic development element. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Thank you. Eastside Fire and Rescue met, get it up, met on June 8th, 2023, 4:00 PM, at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. We had a couple of recognitions, one for retirement engineer Scott Percival. And then we had a special recognition promotion of three engineers, Josh Gilbert, Carson McCann, and Anna Dixon. During the fire chief's briefing, he updated us on the Duval RFP update. And at the June 7th meeting, the Duval Commissioners continued a discussion around whether they want to add two proposals, one from Redmond Fire, the other with Eastside Fire and Rescue. The next meeting on that is June 21st, which is tomorrow, and then they are hoping to make a decision by June 28th. On Mercer Island Service Request, on June 6th, Mercer Island and City Manager provided an update to the City Council on the ad hoc committee's progress reviewing the Bellevue Fire and Fire and Eastside Fire and Rescue proposals. No decisions were made at that meeting, and City Manager committed to coming back with a recommendation at future dates. Update on EFOC was Eastside Fire and Rescue, and City of Izaco continued to collaborate on Washington State Department of Ecology agreed order and getting closer to the final approval from ecology on that item. We currently have not continued with arbit- or have not completed the arbitration. We're hoping that that will be completed sometime in the next couple of months. We got, we received the seventh and final EEOC closure notice that all the EEOC complaints and things were filed for COVID have been arbit- or been closed, and no findings. We, new hires, we secured 10 spots for the Fall Recruit Academy. Allows us to move our hiring number up from eight and tend to keep track in achieving full status. One of the things, other cool things that he discussed, and it was actually a local one, is that we actually have one full, you know, group of firefighters that are all female. And he showed a photo of them. They're actually coming out of our station here. That's kind of cool. Yeah. And then they showed a new engine that Samamish got, and talked about the remodel for Station 82. And we rounded it up with an update on the core program, something I asked, and I think would love to bring here to give you guys an update of how that's going. It talked about the number of calls. It broke down how many are in North Bend, how many are in Samamish. Really a good presentation, something I think we should see. This is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Regional Committees. Is there anybody that would like to speak about our regional committee report?
We met with the Sound Cities Public Issues Committee on the 14th, I believe. We discussed the metro cutbacks that are coming to the transportation system and the criteria for reestablishing services after the cutbacks are through. And unfortunately, the bias against rural transit continues, and we will not be seeing any additional services, nor do we fit the criteria for establishing new services. But apparently like taking our tax dollars. We also discussed the Wastewater Treatment Division and their service increases and rate hikes that are coming in. And we discussed upcoming events at the, at the PIC, and some of our networking dinners. That was it, Your Honor.
My regional committee is King County Board of Health Update. It was held on June 15th at 1:00 via Zoom or hybrid from Seattle City Council. We had a presentation on youth and mental health, and a very important facility is closing, so that will make it difficult. They talked about school-based screenings and referrals for services. And then we had a chair's report from Dr. Faisal Khan on monkeypox, which appears to have peaked, and we're good in King County. And there's a two-dose vaccine for prevention. We fit the criteria. And that's it. So I guess we will be moving on to the main agenda. Item number seven, AB 23-055. Public hearing continued. Resolution adopting six-year transportation improvement plan 2023 through 2029. Mr. Regos, will you please provide the staff report?
You bet. Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Council. Page 29 in your packet. This TIP is something we do every year, and it's one of the city's most important guiding documents. It's basically a guide for all of our transportation capital projects, which include sidewalks, roundabouts, turn lanes, et cetera. So we have included in the staff report a TIP map. There's a TIP narrative, a brief description of each project. There's also a TIP table that projects the revenues and expenses for each of these projects. It's a six-year document. The state requires each city to provide that document to them by July 1st of each year, so that we are eligible for grants. And we've been very successful at obtaining state Transportation Improvement Board grants and Puget Sound Regional Council grants over the last five to 10 years. Currently, we're working on about 13 active projects, and that's shown in page 30 on your packet. Several of those are very large. Those include a two-lane roundabout at Mount Si Boulevard and State Route 202 that will access the outlet mall. We also have a new road of South Fork Avenue Extension that connects North Bend Way to 202. There's also another roundabout at Mount Si Road and North Bend Way as well. So, and then lots of pedestrian projects. So I'm happy. That concludes my staff report. Recommend approval. Do you take any questions?
Council, do you have any clarifying questions? Okay. The public hearing on the six-year TIP was opened at the May 16th City Council meeting and continued to tonight's meeting. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on this issue, we invite you to come forward if you are attending in council chambers, or to indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you are attending remotely. We will start with those attending in council chambers first, and then move on to those attending remotely. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. So appears nobody in chambers. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Great. I will now close the public hearing on the six-year tip. Councilmember Loudonback, will you please make the motion?
With that enthusiastic gaveling of the hearing to an end, I would like to make a motion to approve AB 23-075, adopting the six-year transportation improvement plan 2024 through 2029, as a final reading.
I'd be thrilled to second that.
Councilmember Loudonback, would you like to comment on the motion?
This is one of several touches that we've had on this document, the continuation of the hearing. We've heard from the public, and I believe that we have a good plan going forward, and I would encourage you to pass.
Councilmember Miller, would you like to comment?
I'll be brief about it. I think there's been an awful lot of effort going forward with this plan at the moment. Of course, things can change throughout the next coming year, as far as the position of some projects. That'll let the public know for sure. But right now, it's pretty exciting. So there's a lot of great things to look forward to, and I wish it does pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional counsel that wish to comment? Ross, could you please repeat the motion?
Absolutely, Your Honor. Motion to approve AB 23-075, a resolution adopting the six-year transportation improvement plan 2024 through 2029, as a final reading.
Is there anyone, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion moves forward. Item number eight, AB 23-076, resolution authorizing parks element adoption for 2024 comp plan. Mr. McCarty, will you please provide the staff report?
Will do. Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm very happy to bring you our draft parks element. It's second to the transportation element, is the next element, hopefully tonight through the gate, of our comprehensive plan updates due in 2024. There's three principal purposes of the update. The first one is to be consistent with Growth Management Act and countywide planning policy requirements, the second being just simply to update outdated information since the time of the last update. And then third, we want to reflect community needs and desires. Within this, there are updates to our population forecast. Since the time of our last update, we've grown considerably within North Bend, and that changes our growth targets and our population forecast accordingly, which then changes the information in our parks' capital improvements, or our capital level of service standards. We have updated the parks inventory based on public feedback and our parks' capital facilities plan, which shows which park and trail improvements we plan to do. This is a lot, a lot of this is based extensively on a public survey, which the Parks Commission conducted back in the summer of 2022, and which provided quite a bit of public input as far as what the community is desiring for park and trail facilities. There's also just minor amendments to park policies and minor amendments to our park element maps. The Parks Commission and Planning Commission jointly held a public hearing on the amendments at their meeting in February, February 15th. And then they jointly made a recommendation of approval on April 19th, 2023. So staff recommend approval of these amendments, subject to CEPA review, which would occur with the rest of the comprehensive plan update, and adoption with the rest of the comprehensive plan amendments formally when those are ready for our 2024 update. Happy to turn it back to you and answer any questions.
Council, do you have any clarifying questions? Okay. If any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward if you are attending in council chambers, or to indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you're attending remotely. We'll start with those attending in council chambers first, and then move on to those attending remotely. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Anybody on Zoom?
No one online.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller, will you please make the motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Councilmember Miller, would you like to comment on the motion?
Again, I'll probably be a little bit brief here, but I think it's exciting what's coming in the direction of the parks. So I hope the city and the constituents out there can really dig their teeth into all the exciting things that are going to come ahead. So, thank you.
Are there any other council members that would like to speak to it? Great. So, motion to approve AB 23-076, a resolution authorizing adoption of the Parks Element Update for the 2024 North Bend Comprehensive Plan as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to item number nine, AB 23-077, motion authorizing payment to Si View MPD for Tenant Trailhead Park Phase Two. Mr. Regos, will you please provide the staff report?
You bet. Thank you, Your Honor. Page 129 in your packet. The location of Tenant Trailhead Park, if you haven't been there, on Ryberry Way, Parallels 90 off of Exit 31. This park project is really a partnership between the city of North Bend and Si View Metropolitan Park District. There is a request for some more financial support from the Parks District for this particular project, so that's why we're here tonight. One of the requirements the city had as part of this project in the last few years is for them to connect to water and sewer, so there is a higher level of service for the restroom facility that will be on site. The city did not want honey buckets or outhouses to be there, in part because it's located so close to a Arrive condominium development, and sewer is nearly right along the frontage there. So there's two sources of this funding, of $350,000. The first source of funding is the King County Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Levy. We would use $240,000 from that pot. And then from the other source of money would be park impact fees. So both of those are generally OPM, other people's money. And this is a great park, and we'd like to see the construction of Phase Two start this summer. Phase One has already been mostly completed. There's a lot of mountain biking trails that have been worked on for the past nine months or so. So I anticipate that Phase Two will be done by spring or summer next year. So look for your support. Answer any questions.
Council, do you have any clarifying questions? Alan.
If, Mark, if I recall, when we first set this up, it was not going to be a temporary restroom, but it was going to be a vaulted system that was originally designed there, similar to other parks that are consistent. If there wasn't sewer, it would have been, that was the original design when we came up with this. Was it not to be a vaulted?
I just don't think it was really thought about. There's always been, there's been public sewer there for 20, 20 years, since Arrive Condos and Forester Woods was built. I think the Si View Metropolitan Park District, I don't want to speak for them, but I believe they were hoping that it would be an outhouse with a septic vault that would get pumped out, the sewage would get pumped out several times a year, or honey buckets. But the reality is, public sewer is right there. It's right next to their property, or our property.
Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay. If any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we invite you to come forward if you are attending in council chambers, or indicate in the chat box, or by star nine if you're attending remotely. We will start with those attending in council chambers first, and then move on to those attending remotely. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
Not at this time.
Councilmember Loudonback, will you please make the motion?
Absolutely, Your Honor. Thank you. Motion to approve AB 23-077, authorizing the mayor to issue a payment to the Si View Metropolitan Park District when 75% of the Phase Two park construction is completed in an amount not to exceed $350,000 for Phase Two construction of Tenant Trailhead Park Project.
Second.
Would anybody, all in favor? Oh, sorry. That shouldn't. Does the council wish to comment?
As the maker of the motion, Your Honor, thank you. I think Mark gave us a decent summary. This is a fantastic facility, one which I will not be breaking any bones
This is a fantastic facility, one which I will not be breaking any bones in. Mountain biking is a bit beyond me at this age, but I know that it is going to be enthusiastically attended by many members of our community, of all age groups, and it's a fantastic facility. It's going to open up a whole area that has thus far not been open to the public, and it's a great facility, and I would encourage you to pass on this.
I would agree with my colleague. I think this is going to be one of those economic drivers, at least something that's going to add more value to North Bend, easy to reach, hard to leave, having a huge population of folks for users. I understand that the sewer piece was an oversight back, you know, based on when we were all discussing that. However, adding sewer in there is the right thing to do for the city, because it is city property, but it's also going to be a testament to how much we care about this space and how much we want to have that right welcome mat for all of those who want to come out to North Bend to utilize this facility. So I think it's a win-win. It's going to cost us a little bit more money than we anticipated, which I appreciate and respect, and I will write this up, chalk this down as lesson learned for other land development partnerships that will be thinking about sewer, if sewer is there at the original design phase. So I recommend it do pass. Thank you.
Yes. I just want to add a thank you to Mark, who I know worked really hard to kind of get those numbers down, quite a bit lower than what they were at originally when this came through. So thank you so much. I think this is going to be a successful project on all sides, all ends, and the community will thrive because of it. And please be safe, of course.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, it's a great testament to collaboration, coming together. Originally, there was, it was going to be developed into, you know, multi, or high-density, multi-unit housing, and instead, now there's an economic driver that's going to be a regional asset inside of the city limits. Of course, it should be on a facility that's properly attached to sewer. I think we agree with that. It simply was anticipated later in the process. And again, just, it's a great, King County, the city, and the Park District all came together, equally contributed to the acquisition of that property, and it's continued. It's been a long time, as public, things like this do take time. It's a drip, drip, drip. It does not happen overnight, and it happens because of a lot of hard work on a lot of different parts of, by lots of different people, including the staff of the city, and I want to say thank you. I think it's, yeah, really exciting, and the sooner it gets built, the better, and I will be in support.
Anybody else? If any members... Oh, okay. Motion to approve AB 23-077, authorizing the mayor to issue payment to Si View MPD when 75% of the Phase Two park construction is completed in an amount not to exceed $350,000 for Phase Two construction of Tenant Trailhead Park Project. Motion to approve? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And the motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10, AB 23-078, motion approving Housing Action Plan. Ms. Deming, will you please provide the staff report?
Thank you. Counsel, before you tonight is a motion to recommend city council approval of the proposed Housing Action Plan, or HAP, and associated materials to fulfill Washington State Department of Commerce grant commitment. The city participated in the Snoqualmie Valley Housing Needs Assessment Report and completed a North Bend-specific housing needs assessment. These documents provide a substantial amount of data and information related to jobs, housing balance, cost burdened renters, and homeowners and more. The community survey for the HAP was launched in January 2023, where over 500 individuals participated. Interviewers, stakeholder meetings, and school drawing contests were also part of the public outreach efforts. This HAP does not include legislation or policies, but provides a menu or toolbox of strategies for the city to consider implementing in the future in order to encourage construction of additional affordable and market-rate housing in a greater variety of housing types and at prices that are accessible to a greater variety of incomes. These strategies do not commit the council to approving future ordinances, but just the staff will work to bring these ordinances to council for their review with no requirement to approve them. A majority of the document is the appendices to the HAP, which include the Housing Needs Assessment, Public Engagement Summary, and Housing Policy Framework Review. The meat of the document, or specifically the housing strategies, start on page 27. The Planning Commission and council held a work study on November 1st, 2022, and between December and May 2023, the Planning Commission discussed the work at four meetings, two of which were public hearings. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the HAP to council. Some of the work completed may be utilized for the preparation of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update, which would also go through a public hearing process and would require approval by the council if it were to be included. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Additionally, Blue Line staff are here and available to answer questions you may have. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any clarifying questions?
That's true. Question, housing, affordable housing, which I think everyone here agrees we have a serious issue with. Low the 80% threshold of median King County income. What can we as a city do? Would you agree with the statement that we're going to need some help because that's going to be some sort of subsidized housing?
That is correct. The state understands that affordable housing is required to be subsidized. What's going to come to you as part of the comp plan update is a requirement for us to plan and accommodate. We'll have to make sure that we've got a designation of allowable types and at densities that would promote them. But the understanding is that in order to, for them to be affordable, likely they would need to be subsidized. That's correct.
Okay. So we'll need the state to help us with that. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. If any members of the audience would like comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward if you are attending in council chambers, or to indicate in the chat box, or by star nine if you're attending remotely. We will start with those attending in council chambers first, and then move on to those attending remotely. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Anybody online?
No one online at this time.
Okay. Counselmember Miller, will you please make the motion?
Motion to appro, everybody hear me? Motion to approve AB 23-078, approving Housing Action Plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselmember Miller, would you like to comment on the motion?
I would. I think this has been a long time coming to begin with. I really appreciate that we have to come up with strategies looking forward. I'm not completely satisfied with what I've read, and there's a lot in here, folks. So it's a lot to ingest going forward. Yeah, I want to hear from my fellow council members as well.
Jonathan?
You have a lot to say. I'll try to keep it short because I have an amendment to make shortly. My concern with this Housing Action Plan is that it does not reflect the council's vision. And the reason I make that statement is, at no point was the council asked for its vision of what North Bend should look like. We had two quick opportunities to ask some questions about this, and that is about all. Councils expressed a desire to have deeper discussion, and I hope that that is forthcoming. I will, I'll point out a couple things, but I will save most of this for what I will propose, which is a work study. One of the things we've been told is that this is just tools. But in here, on page 18, and these are why I want to spend a lot of time on this, because it's more than just tools. This is going to set policy and direction for the city, and I want to make sure that my fellow council members have the input that they wish, if at all, to speak to this and see that their desires and vision incorporated. Page 18, Housing Action Plan contains a review of the community's housing needs and goals, an evaluation of existing strategies to understand gaps, and recommendations for North Bend-specific solutions, period. It also sets a policy direction for the city's review of and updates the comprehensive plan programs and regulations that set the stage for North, for housing creation and preservation. This is, this is heavy. This is, there's a lot of stuff in here, and this will be referenced from other elements of our comprehensive plan. So what is in here is really going to be what ultimately is going to guide a lot of decisions in the future. There's, there's talk about all sorts of different housing. We'll obviously address this during, I hope, work study. There's talk in here about doing, changing single-family zones as one of the tools to allow duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. And that's something even the state stated with their new policy that cities our size do not have to do, yet we're going above and beyond what the state is requiring. That's one of the tools that's recommended. Now, maybe that is a tool that my fellow council members like to see, but maybe that is something that we would like to see removed, because that is not something that we want to see in our town. I think some of these things will radically change the look and feel of our community for many, many years, and oftentimes, when these things are done, you cannot undo them. So for those reasons, I would like to make an amendment, and actually, I'll let my fellow council members speak, and if they have something to say, then I'll make an amendment. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Jonathan, for talking about a potential amendment here. First of all, I want to say thank you for the amount of effort that went into this plan. Over 300 and some odd pages, as Councilmember Miller indicated, there's a lot to digest. I read through it once, and obviously had to start doubling back. By time to, I got about four or five pages in of notes. It was very clear to me that we do need to have a work study where we can discuss this as a group, which is also something that we as a council have asked for on at least two different occasions that I can reference in my notes for. Therefore, I do feel that it should go back to work study, so I appreciate the amendment that you're saying you're going to make, which is great. There are awesome nuggets in here that I think we really need to explore. So for example, on some of the suggested solutions, when it comes to looking at growth management and our growth estimates and projections and so forth, there are recommendations in there, for example, where the city should contemplate or at least designate, identify where certain areas within the community or outside of the community could be annexed. And just a simple designation of that would enact some sort of reassessment of what the growth management plan should be, if I'm reading it correctly. But again, I need consultants' expertise to weigh on, on whether that's, that's accurate reading. The thing I like about things like that is that if it's just simply calling out certain things that we could identify in the future that will help us understand what our actual projections will be and how we may need to satisfy those in 20, 30, 40 years, that's great. There are also other indications in here that talk about, you know, and I'll quote here, "The state and county are still in the process of finalizing growth targets for municipal jurisdictions." You know, so when I read notes like that, how will that impact our decisions, and how will that impact with whatever this plan is, is going to set forth? I know this is not fixed in stone, as Rebecca has said, in the sense that we can revisit and we can adjust and modify over time, but I think we still need to have this discussion as a group, not just as an individual reader, so that I could hear everybody's opinion on whether or not I'm interpreting certain lines correctly. My eyes could be open through that debate and discussion. So I would recommend that if a motion is made, that it does go back to work study. If that motion is not made, I will then make a motion similar to that. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for the hard work done here, but my concern is, is this does not really reflect, as I see some of these things, I'm concerned that it does not reflect what future councils have put together in trying to make, continue to make this a rural community. I have some concerns with the densities that we're taking a look at. This, this council and past council of the state have worked very hard to remove certain areas and reduce the amount of buildable land in order to keep the population down and maintain a rural community. This document doesn't reflect any of those from the, from, you know, past councils. I'd like to find out that if the current council wants to move forward, or citizens want to move forward with this. This would be taking a bunch of areas right now that are down zoned, that we'd be looking at upzoning them and increasing densities. I think it will completely change the way this place looks going forward. I know it's, it's a recommendation, but I think as councils look forward and move forward, they're going to take a look at and say, these are something that this council put up, put forward. And I think it's important for us to really look at this and say, is this the way we want this community built? Is this the density we want to see? Make sure this is the council's recommendation going forward, not something coming out of the administration. So I do hope that it goes to work study and support it going to work study so the council can put their...
Anybody else?
I just see it differently. This is part of the process. Adopting the Housing Action Plan is part of the conversation. It is a conversation we're having right now and have been having and are going to continue to have. I think a work study is absolutely appropriate. My understanding of this isn't committing us to anything. It's providing access to grant funding to continue to have this conversation using external funds, and as Mr. Regos earlier said, other people's money to address an issue, which in my mind is top of mind for all of us. And anyone in this region, having a roof over your head, it could not be a more fundamental right and something the city needs to be engaged in and not splitting hairs. I'm sorry, I don't mean to mischaracterize any of this and any of the hard work and good intention and intention of this council. It isn't about right or wrong, but rather about moving together and exploring this area and continuing to be in conversation. I'm in support of the Housing Action Plan the way that it's written, because it is, you know, do we want quadplexes? Or I don't know the language. I'm learning the language. And this doesn't say, yes, I'm in support of that. That's not what I'm voting for. It's not what, to me, this embeds. I don't think that's its intent. It's part of a, you know, the Department of Commerce made available money, the staff. They could have said, if we bring this forward, will council support it? It's hard to know. It is a little bit of a chicken and an egg. What comes first? If not for the state funding, we might not be here having this conversation at all in this moment, as I think we all agree we need to and should be, and we are. That is true. So in that sense, you know, and how much staff time the staff is going to continue to engage and listen, as they will, and I hope, you know, there's room for improvement all around in terms of how we do develop a vision and implement it and trust each other to be doing so. I push back a little the notion that this is council's, or the administration's vision versus council's vision. It was brought forward by staff. We have had opportunities to comment. We will continue to have opportunities to comment. And again, I think it's not wrong to say it is a toolbox or set of strategies. I'm pleased to live in a state that says, look, we're trying to put people in one place such that there's lots of places without people. To me, is the Growth Management Act, and it's not Texas, and there's reasons, and that means that there are going to continue to be people who want to live here, as we all do. Reasons we well understand and share, and part of what we're doing in governance is continuing to make this head of high quality of living, and goodness me, but we need the folks to work in the service industries and so on and so forth, and have affordable housing. And we have to be, you know, we need to have this conversation. And to that end, I will be voting in favor of passing the Housing Action Plan tonight, such that we can move forward together, have a focused vision. The staff can, can move on to the next steps in what is this, the same and ongoing process of putting together the economic development part of the Comprehensive Plan, two pieces of which we advanced forward this evening and go about. That's, I think, our role as a policy body is, and again, I don't mean to cast any aspersions or ill intent on any amendments that may be coming forward. I just see a different path, which is to embrace this, see it as complete and as a starting point, not an ending point, in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I really appreciate everybody's candor in speaking into this subject matter, and I want to thank everybody who's been a part of creating this thus far, and our staff as well. What I don't think has been spoken into yet, and I will now, is the time What I don't think has been spoken into yet, and I will now, is the timeframe that went into having this appear today on tonight's agenda. There's been a shift of that timeframe. Potentially, the push to have it tonight doesn't necessarily mean it's got to be done tonight, but we can have a little bit of time potentially into September where we have to make this agreement, this commitment to go forward with this grant. Do we want it, or do we not? The amount is $15,000. I'm sure that's the exact amount. Thank you for confirming that. So that's part of what's going into tonight's discussion, I hope, is that I was confused personally about what was leading, what was the push. I know people on Planning Commission, can't speak for all these individuals, felt that there was a push to get this to go forward, so maybe that would have made the decisions a little differently. I don't know. But I think we need to be transparent always, fully understand, for our public to understand what brought this to tonight's agenda right now. So that's my hesitancy to push it to go forward in that direction. I want us to be better communicators in general, and this is an opportunity to be doing better, too. Thank you.
Jonathan already pushed his button. Go ahead.
I'd like to associate myself with the comments of Mr. Jocelyn. The possibility of forcing duplex, quadplex, sixplexes into single-family homes was a notion that was brought forth during the legislative session under HB 1110. The original drawing of that bill did go down to populations, towns of 6,000, and it was only after some strenuous objections and negotiation that it was able to be removed and brought up to citizens and cities of 25,000. The legislators that we've spoken to at meetings such as the St. Kwame Valley Governments Association were ambivalent about what was going to happen in the next session as to whether or not they were going to expand down to cities of our size. The only way to really inoculate yourself from that sort of legislative interference into our local planning authority is going to be that you form communities of common interest, because they won't legally challenge those. That means if you're in a homeowners association or some other sort of association that has a common interest, and tractually, they will not be coming to place quadplexes in your neighborhood. That doesn't mean that they aren't going to continue to try. Other things that we have to address that were expressed earlier by some of my colleagues, there was certainly more than just a suggestion that, from the county and state level, that UGA's be forced to be annexed by cities. It didn't get through in this session, but it certainly is a possibility, and we have to prepare ourselves for the fact that there may be some legislation that is going to compel us to take those things. Whether or not it contains money to do those things is yet to be ascertained. That being said, the plan itself is merely opening up different venues for us to explore moving forward so that we find ourselves in compliance, eligible for funding and grants, to help to deal with the things that otherwise might be thrust upon us without the ability to tap any sort of other people's money, as Mr. Regos said. So I'm going to support this document tonight. We are going to continue to have discussions. There are many waypoints in this document that are touchpoints that are going to come back to this council and future councils. So I'm going to suggest that we pass this tonight and that we continue to have the conversations. There's no need to continue to push the ball down the road. I think we can act comfortably and take our opportunities to modify policy issues as they present themselves coming forward. That's it.
I have a comment to make. I initially wanted to get on council because I wanted to stop growth, but I didn't know what I didn't know, and I didn't know that King County was exploding and we're a hotbed and everybody wants to live here. So moving forward, I do support this measure. I work with a bunch of nurses that all say, I wish that I could move to North Bend, but I can't afford it. If we had duplexes, triplexes, and other venues for people starting out, it would be helpful, and we wouldn't be in this million-dollar home or mobile home park situation. So I do support it, not just for nurses, but for teachers and all the kinds of regular jobs that people have that just want to have a nice place to live, in a beautiful place that we all get to have because we got here early. And I do support it, and I don't want overdevelopment by any means, no six-story apartment buildings, but we can have a diversity of housing in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for all your words. I mean, to me, this expresses the point why we need to talk further, quite frankly. I don't see this document as saying that we're now going to have a new influx of inventory and so forth. Going back to Ms. Miller's point, which was, the reason why this is here tonight, was suddenly made available to us today, is that there's a certain decision on whether there's going to be certain grant monies paid to us by a certain date by just accepting a housing needs plan. Doesn't necessarily have to be this specific one. We can modify it. What that means is, is that we need to process this as a group, go through it, figure out what we want, align on it, then elect to what that housing plan should be, submit it back to Rebecca, she submits it to the funders, we get the grant monies if that's how we want to go. So this plan isn't saying that this is exactly what we're going to be doing. So I just want to be clear, the pressure here is a clock that was just revealed to us today, not for the whole plan itself, but just to get $15,000. Now, we have gotten other grant money along the way on this journey, so I don't see how this is going to stop us from having other grant monies going forward if we're not able to do it. There's just a lot of comments in here that we need to batter out within a work study that, or we can spend the next two hours going line by line down all of our different issues. So I'd recommend you really consider it going back to work study. Thank you.
Can I just also add, the two earlier work studies that we did had included multiple planning commissioners, which kind of basically made it, rolled it down to maybe one minute per person if they wanted to talk into this, which is not a significant low amount of time to talk about something so important. So that was one work study. The following work study was lumped into another heavy commentary moment, so we had a lot hitting us. That work study, it was late in the evening. I don't think it's easy to ingest huge information when it's leering towards 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. So therefore, that's the reason why I would like to see this come back again, personally. That's it. A little bit more conversation. I want this to go through eventually, for sure, because it's important.
Mary, actually, you hit upon something that I had been concerned with, is just the opportunity to have a conversation. The two chances we did have to look at it were very limited, and I think this council as a whole does best when there's seven of us sitting in a room exchanging different ideas and when we work together as a group. Your positions, Mr. Jocelyn, are different than mine, but when we sit down and talk, we oftentimes find some common ground. And that's where I think, as a council, we succeed, is when we tend to compromise, work together, and try to figure out a way forward. That's why I think a work study is the best place to look at this. This is a huge document, and it is not just tools. This is going to really impact our community. Each of us have a different opinion about what we like to see, and that's what we need to get out. Each of us has to speak to that. And at the end of that meeting, I hope that there's some sort of common thread vision from all seven of us, which probably will reflect all of us compromising a bit, but I also think that will probably be more reflective of the community that we live in as a whole. When we compromise, we tend to go towards the middle, and that tends to reflect the community's wishes as well. So we really do want to see this move forward to a work study, therefore, I would like to make a motion to amend the motion that was presented, motion to amend the main motion to reschedule consideration of approval of the Housing Action Plan to September 19, 2023.
Second. Discussion. Okay, spoke to it, if anyone else...
Same with myself, Your Honor.
I'll be voting against. Again, I think that it's going to, resources of staff and focus and energy could be better spent. I don't disagree that there's a need for conversation. That conversation is going to happen in September, and there are then questions, I think, that puts $15,000 at risk. I think it's wrong to frame conversation as somehow that's the fuse that got lit. I'm looking at the agenda packet, says that on November 1, 2022, there was a Planning Commission work study. That was nine months ago. And there have been, I'm not, I have heard councils say they feel the opportunity to comment has been inadequate. I'm simply pointing out that there has been more than one opportunity to comment, and I am in favor of moving forward and passing this this evening, and I'll be voting against the amendment proposed by Councilmember Rosen. Thanks.
Yeah, I would be supporting it. One of my concerns with this, and I understand that we feel that we're looking at a $15,000, is there are recommendations in here that will affect us moving forward. Also, I believe in a work study most recently, we did talk about this in going to work study prior to this. I'd like to see this move forward. I think there's some good stuff in here, but I have some very deep concerns on some of the recommendations and make sure that we continue to maintain the character of this city. It's important. It's something our citizens want. I don't see a reason why we would not bring this to work study, since it was agreed during a work study that we all moved this to work study. I will be voting in support of the work study.
Lisa, how do I move forward?
There's an amendment on the floor. You can ask Councilmember Rosen to repeat his amendment, or you can move forward with the vote on the amendment. It might be helpful for him to repeat it. That's up to you.
I can do that. Got it. Motion to amend the main motion to reschedule the consideration of approval of the Housing Action Plan to September 19, 2023. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion is four in favor and three oppose, Jocelyn, Holden, and Loudenback.
And now you would vote on the main motion as amended.
Aye. Motion to approve AB 23-78, approving the Housing Action Plan amended to September 19 work study. All in favor?
I beg your pardon, Mayor Protem. September 19 is a regular council meeting, so perhaps just use the date. It's not a work study.
Amendment is September 19. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And it is four to three. No, okay. No voting.
I will vote for it and make a motion to lay it upon the table.
There's a motion to lay upon the table. I believe that is non-debatable and requires five votes in favor, if I recall. Councilmember Loudenback?
Would you please articulate that in more layman's terms? Thank you.
I will try. I will try. Lay upon the table is to take a vote about, basically to do nothing. The only way to remove something from the table is at a later time. You would actually have to make a motion to remove it from the table. So if you place it on the table tonight, it's kind of in limbo.
But the non-debatable part, could you expand on that?
Some motions in parliamentary procedure are non-debatable. Another example is motion to call for the question.
Point of information, did we not already just vote four to three? What is it that would be laid upon the table?
Good point. You voted yes on the amendment, and as a formality, you would go back to the main motion as amended, because now you've amended the main motion. So lay upon the table really would take that from the body and do something differently with it. It's...
Point of information, doesn't the sequence matter on this? Because the motion on the floor was the motion amended, there were votes already taken for that motion, and then the nay voter did not speak nay or yea, but then placed another motion after the motion was already being voted upon. So doesn't the sequence matter in that?
It does, and it's very confusing because of the non-debatable part. So the main motion does need to be voted upon at this time, and Councilmember Loudenback...
I believe I voted in the affirmative, which is required before you can make a motion to lay upon the table. I voted affirmatively for the main motion, which was amended. Therefore, the entire situation is laid upon the table. Is that not correct?
Point of information, that main motion was now moot after the amended motion, so the amended motion is the only motion on the table. So you can vote affirmative for the amended motion and then come back to place it on the table to then, at a later date, come back and bring it to the table, but as I understand, the sequence of voting events there would make that not possible.
Simple question. Russ, what is your intent so maybe I just understand it a little better?
No. No.
Point of information, if the motion to lay on the table continues, that means it'll sit in perpetuality. Trying to, what I'm trying to say here. That means it'll stay on the table in perpetuity until a later date, which means that we will not take discussion at a work study, we will not take discussion or at a future meeting. So essentially, Housing Action Plan could sit in an abyss forever.
Correct. And your parliamentarian is hereby making the decision that the motion to lay on the table is untimely. I've described what it is, but I did not describe whether it was timely or not. It is not, you've got a main motion to vote on as amended. That's it.
Thank you.
Point of information, I'm of the belief that council voted five in favor and two abstaining in favor of the amended motion, which places Housing Action Plan on the agenda for the September regular meeting.
How do I move forward?
The parliamentarian has ruled that the motion to lay upon the table was untimely and therefore not applicable. So we're going to, at some point, have a work study where you all can talk about this. Good luck.
Mayor Protem, I do believe the main motion is still not voted upon. Is that correct?
I thought it was two in favor, or five in favor, two abstained on the motion, on the amended motion.
Thank you. Thank you, this little detour. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item number 11, AB 23-079, motion authorizing second amendment with DNR regarding Dahlgren Family Park. Mr. McCarty, will you please provide the staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't want to have as much fun with the motion on this one, and there's a lot of moving parts, so I'll try to make it real clear. So just a first premise, we understand that we always want to bring to you agenda items at first through the council committee process so that the council committee can then vet and properly understand the issue. In this case, there was a timing issue where we don't have a July 4 council meeting, and the Department of Natural Resources, who we're contracting with to build the park, is also under a grant deadline to be able to complete the improvements by the end of the year. So we're hoping to get a decision on the ILA amendment back to them to understand whether or not to move forward with construction. So to then take you back a little bit, the broad context of this was that back in the pre-COVID era, this was an opportunity to leverage grant funds, so using the cost of constructing the Dahlgren Family Park as grant match to a grant that the Department of Natural Resources, as a primary sponsor, and the city as a secondary sponsor, applied for to construct adjacent improvements to the King County Tanner Landing Park to provide better whitewater access, as well as additional whitewater access sites up the Middle Fork River. That grant was approved, and so as a way to, best way to do that, we entered an interlocal agreement with Department of Natural Resources to receive park impact fee revenue and construct the park. That was, again, four years ago, and a lot of time has changed. the park. That was, again, four years ago, and a lot of time has changed. COVID changes the situation and delayed things a lot, and the cost of construction has gone up. So Department of Natural Resources put out the bid request, and we received bids back. Those bids were higher than anticipated, and so there's an overage of 261,000 for the project. DNR generously is volunteering to cover 100,000 of that overage from positive variance that they have available within the grant budget. They're requesting that the city cover the remaining 161,000. We do have park impact fee revenue that can cover that purpose. So with that, the motion then is to amend or provide a second amendment to the interlocal agreement with Department of Natural Resources, provide them with the additional 161,000 up to 161,000 in park impact fee revenue for the purpose of constructing the park. So happy to answer questions on the ILA or its amendments, and we also have Laura Cooper here from the Department of Natural Resources, who can address further questions about the budget or about the bids.
Counsel, do you have any clarifying questions?
Yeah. Mark, maybe you want to take this, because you and I did discuss this earlier. Just preface it, I'm in favor of this and want to see this move forward. But my question earlier to Mark was just trying to understand the financing and what the status of our park impact fees were and how this would impact that. And there was some confusion that I had, and I thought others might have had, so it would be helpful to hear. This money has not been set aside. This will come directly out of that park impact fee. I thought possibly had it already been set aside in the several, separate funds. So we will be deducting 1.2 million from the park impact fees, bringing that balance down substantially.
Yeah, that's correct. We have about, as I received this information today, have 2.95 million dollars in our park impact fee that's paid by developers for projects, whether they're commercial or residential, coming to the city. We just approved tonight 110,000 dollars of park impact fees towards Tenant Trailhead Park. That takes the balance down to roughly 2.84 million. This is, this bounces around each day as building permits come in or we spend money. The, there would be an additional 900, you'll, you'll see in the recitals on page 143 of your packet, where there's an interlocal agreement to pay 960,000 dollars for this improvements at this four-acre park. So that brings the balance down to about 1.8 million. With that 900,000, 960,000, there was an amendment to that of 85,000. And then there would be an additional 160,000 tonight of park impact fees. So that takes our balance roughly to 1.64 million park impact fees, which, which is still great. We've still got a lot of money available for this project.
Thanks, Mark. I was hoping it was set aside elsewhere, but it wasn't. But still, I agree, 1.6 is funny, but just wanted everyone to at least have that information. I found it helpful. If anyone else does, so be it.
Thank you. I was curious about that. Appreciate it.
That was my question of where are we at with impact fees. Thank you.
Do you know if the project was value engineered?
I would refer that to Mike and Mrs. Cooper here.
Yeah, so I can start. We have worked through the budget on that to find out where opportunities would be for reducing the cost. We looked most closely at a lot of the grading work. The soils on the site were amended during the construction of the adjacent Dahlgren Mulley Family Project, and as a result, there was a need for additional topsoil or soil amendments. And that was going to be a fairly large cost. So we took an early look at that and provided some amendments to the specs in areas where we didn't feel like the full amendment was necessary, in areas of lawn or prairie, as opposed to where you're planting shrubs and trees. And so that was an opportunity for significant cost savings. I'll turn it over to Laura if you have anything else.
Hi. So thanks. I'm Laura, and I'm excited about this project. And I really appreciate that we were able to put together that grant a couple of years ago. So we went ahead. There's, there's a couple of elements in the park that we ended up purchasing using state contracts ahead of time. So those are value engineered now. That includes the toilet building and some really amazing place sculptures by a local company here. And most of the other elements are kind of integral to the park. So pathways, stormwater. The only element that we were considering potentially removing was the picnic shelter. But the bid didn't put a whole bunch of money on that. So I think we, we value engineered mostly through the soils, I guess, at this point, and by using the state contract, some of the other elements. And it, I think in some ways, that actually reduced the bid cost, because those elements are really long lead time elements. The toilet building took about a year to, between purchasing, and now it's ready for delivery. And the same is true for the other elements. If we had gone out to bid without those elements ready to install, the contractors wouldn't have any sense that they could even meet the deadlines, just because of the time it takes to get things manufactured. So I think we did a lot of stuff to try to make the process very efficient along the way. This is the first time we actually have real costs. And I actually did a, a quick inflation calculator between the bid estimate that was provided by the developer in 2020 and where we are today. And we're actually a little bit below what the inflation would have estimated the cost of the park is. So I would say inflation is pretty much the main reason why the construction cost increased by about 165,000. And the other cost was other, other, other stuff, like engineering took longer and was more involved than we thought. And there's been a lot of other miscellaneous costs, like we had to do spray lawn, we had to spray the site to comply with stormwater permits and stuff like that. So there's, that's kind of the reason for the cost increase. I don't know if that makes a little sense.
I apologize also. I didn't properly introduce Laura. So Laura is with the Department of Natural Resources and is the project manager under the interlocal agreement for this project.
And we think this project is going under construction at the ideal time, actually, because we can get the contractor, if they, they're in the process of signing, they have to provide a lot of evidence of insurance and a performance bond. They are basically ready to start right away, and so we can do the hardscape during the dry season and then install the landscaping right before the wet season, which is the ideal planting time. So I think actually this project will, it's kind of the perfect time to construct it right now.
I'm excited about this park. I'm already using the parking lot to get to the Snoqualmie Valley Trail with my dog, and as are my neighbors. So I think it's going to be a huge, huge win for the east side of town. Motion to approve. Oh, can somebody make a motion?
Go ahead. Motion to approve AB 23-079, authorizing the second amendment to the ILA between City and Washington State Department of Natural Resources for implementation and management of the RCO WWRP grant for improvements along the middle fork of the Snoqualmie River in our agreement number 93-100446.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Question?
I'll go ahead and, since I made the motion, I think this is a great addition. This was something we envisioned a long time ago, of being able to provide some more parks out in the east side of town, and I'm glad to see it moving forward. It's nice that somebody got the numbers. I was concerned whether we were, had the right numbers, because it didn't go through. And as long as we know that we've got money still left and we're not taking more than we have, I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward.
Any other discussion?
Thank you for extemporaneously enlightening us on all the project management. I appreciate your, your input there. Thank you.
Motion to approve AB 23-079, authorizing second amendment to the ILA between the City and Washington State Department of Natural Resources for the implementation and management of the RCO WWRP grant for improvements along the middle fork of the Snoqualmie River in our agreement number 93-100446.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes seven to zero. We will move on to mayor, council, and administration.
All right, we need to go ahead and do item number four and item number five.
Great. Let's move forward. The cassette agenda items were pulled, and they are now on the main agenda. Motion authorizing lease with Snoqualmie Valley Historical Society. Mr. Miller?
Yes, Your Honor and council, this item has been before the Finance Administration Committee. It is, the subject of this is the historical museum lease, which we entered into in 1976 for 19 years. In 1987, it was extended through 2012, and then again through 2019. The lease provided for five-year extension upon a notice given by the Historical Society to the city. Neither they nor we tracked it. We continued under the existing lease and discovered that it needed to be renewed. So in order to make it current, we had the extension drafted up as a new lease agreement between the two parties since we'd gone past the expiration date. That's what you have in the packet. That is the attachment, the staff report. And this, we originally had drafted it for a shorter time period, and the Historical Society asked us if we could make this a 10-year term, and we saw no reason not to do that, so we modified it. The lease you have in front of you would become active upon your vote and would be for a 10-year term. Be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, one of my questions, and the reason I pulled it, was one of the things that we talked about at the finance meeting, and I think it came, got into one of them. I think the Downtown Foundation had put a market rate. One of the things we discussed is disclosing, you know, this is something we do for the community. This is part of our social input. I think it's important for people to understand that what we are providing is a quite substantial discount in order to do that, and that we should be putting what market rate is. And one of the things that kind of brought that up, or I actually, so the question is, what happened, I want to clarify, what happened to the market rate on this one versus the other one, I guess, is Mike?
Well, this, this lease, as you'll note, on the first page of the lease, on page seven, has a rent of $10 per year. And that is pretty much what we've had as a lease rate since the beginning of the lease. And the reason for doing that is to provide a contribution from the city to the Historical Society so that we could make sure that it was a viable operation and it would work for them. If we were to go market rate, obviously it would be substantially higher. As a matter of fact, we are leasing part of the CED building to the Fish and Wildlife Wardens at market rate, and that is substantially more. Mark has a little more detail on that. But in essence, they're renting a couple of offices, and I think it was 8,000 a year. And it probably wasn't any more than 400 square feet to begin with. I don't know what the exact footage was. But that's the kind of rate we would be looking at if it were market rate. So it's a substantial advantage in the form of a contribution. And the way that these things work, as you know better than I, because you've been working with the, with the decision cards every, every budget year, is if we were charging a higher lease rate, we would have a request, probably from this group, for an amount to help cover that. So rather than go through that exercise, we're acknowledging that we're making a contribution for the amenity that it brings and the, and the benefit that it brings in terms of the historical value and the education for our community, and therefore writing it down to $10 per year.
I'm not sure you understood my question, so I'm going to kind of
Point of information.
Point of order, the question.
Is this clarifying questions, or should we put a motion on the table?
It's still, I don't think he understood the clarifying question that I was trying to make. So I'm going to ask my fellow council member to see if he can get it.
Is it possible to add in the actual number dollar amounts that we talked about in the committee meetings to have in the summary statements of how much of a benefit we are providing the community for this particular museum? For example, we talked about the market rates, but we discussed about having a dollar amount. We also talked about sewer repairs in the order of $10,000. So the objective was to actually put it front and center on the, on the summary, on the agenda bill, so that the public could see how much investment the city is actually putting in community and cultural facilities. So I guess the clarifying question is, is that dollar amount available tonight?
We certainly could do that. What I want to know is, how do you want that? Do you want, do you want us to bring it back in this, or do you want us to put something in the pile? Or what's sufficient?
That's a great question.
Be happy to put a memo to file that says the market rate rent, should we, should we, had we charged that, would have been, and therefore that's a contribution we're making. And I think the other provisions in the agreement are quite clear on what our responsibility is versus theirs. So we're not making any contribution toward the sewer payment that we made, that we would not have made ordinarily as a landlord.
For sure. And, and that was the discussion that we had as to why we wanted to have that type of assessment in the summary, in the agenda bill on the summary statement.
Right. The, the part that would have been an accommodation or a contribution, if you will, from the city, according to the lease, would have been the lease rate itself. We're responsible for those improvements outside of the building, and therefore that would have been ours, even if we charged a market rate.
So maybe the answer to your question would be better deferred to Ms. Marshall, which is, can we pass this motion tonight, amend it, provided that the addendum items that we are speaking to be added to the agenda bill after this meeting?
Yes, as I understand it, Councilmember Elwood, you would be moving to pass this motion. You would also be amending the motion to supplement the information in the agenda packet to include market rate numbers. Is that correct?
That way, we don't have to bring it back again.
Yeah.
I'm trying to just
We can do that, provided that the council understands that when the motion is made and passed, we don't have the exact number, but, but we will find it and put it in the supplemental information.
Does that satisfy?
Similar to the next one, which does have the market rate, which was what we asked during the finance meeting, and that's why.
Public comment. Anybody in chambers would like to speak to this motion? And then, anybody online? Nobody online. Great. I guess then, motion, AB 23-
Are you asking for a motion to be done, put on the table first?
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve AB 23-072, authorizing the mayor to execute the restated lease with the Snoqualmie Valley Historical Society in the form and content acceptable to the city attorney.
Second.
Wait, wait, just speak to it. I encourage it pass. I do think it's the right thing to do. I think it, from the beginning, I think the finance committee was committed I think the finance committee was committed to it moving forward. I just wanted to make sure that the comments made at the finance committee were brought forward into the.
I'll echo that. That was my speaking to it. I'll echo his comments. No discussion.
Thank you. On May 16th, City Council approved a funding agreement with the North Bend Downtown Foundation for the purposes of hiring an executive director to manage events, improve coordination and engagement with downtown business, and to attain Main Street community status. One of those short-term goals is to establish a dedicated office and meeting space for the organization. With that in mind, North Bend Downtown Foundation Board and Staff met at the Train Depot and determined there is an available space of 233 square feet. The attached lease agreement outlines the terms of the lease, and Exhibit A identifies the space proposed in the lease. This went to F. and Finance and Administration Committee and recommended approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Council? Discussion from chamber. And then, anybody online?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Motion to approve AB 23-73 authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the North Bend Downtown Foundation for the Train Depot, a form and content acceptable to the city attorney.
Second.
Wait, no, speak to me.
Discussion.
I do recommend this pass, and I do want to thank the administration for putting in the market rate in this one. So I do appreciate that. But I do believe it's the right thing to do. It's a further investment in our downtown foundation, which I'm excited for.
I'd like to speak to my motion as well, Your Honor. I agree with everything that was said, and I would just like to express my gratitude for Council's indulgence on this housekeeping item. Things go through committee. We discuss a lot of topics, and some things are very important for committee members that it be reflected on the public record. This is an example of one. Both of these, the previous one and this one, are examples of. We think it's important to demonstrate how the city is giving back to the community through nonprofits and so forth. So I definitely, for sure, and I know my colleagues do, appreciate your indulgence in this housekeeping item. Thank you.
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Mayor, Council, and Administration concerns and initiatives. Does anybody have anything they wish to comment on? Mr. Miller.
Usually start with you folks, but since I don't have anything for tonight anyway, I will yield the floor.
Allen.
First, I want to thank you for doing a great job. It was a tough night. And so awesome. I do apologize for throwing some housekeeping items which created the issues here tonight. So I do want to say that. I want to thank staff for indulging us through this and the discussions. And I want to thank the council for indulging in all the discussions that we have. I truly believe that when we work as a council, we get a lot done, and we get things done in the right way. With that, just the same old thing, everybody begin to enjoy. Hopefully, we'll get back to some summer weather. I think we've enjoyed the rain a little, helped some of our gardens as we move forward. But you begin, what is, I think, summer hits pretty soon. So by July 5th, we'll see sun again. So everybody do enjoy that.
Let's see. Congratulations to all the graduates out there across the valley, all the parents, all the teachers, all the staff at the schools all across the district. You've had an amazing year, I'm sure, but it's not without challenges, of course. So kudos to every one of you, and thank you very much.
I'll echo that. Congratulations, Class of 2023, whether it be high school, eighth grade, or college, or wherever. Well done. I also want to express gratitude for allowing us to get through tonight. It was a tough night, Heather. Ross, you exercised a muscle I hadn't used in a long time. Thank you for that. Robert's rules muscle is patrifying, whatever. Thank you for that little fun exercise, but it is tough. There was, this should be a video for any council members coming in for training, whatever. It's one for the books, for sure. I would like to express just a concern that, maybe it's more of a perception of concern that we are bringing stuff back to work studies, we're debating things, and so forth. And my concern is this. We have processes that we like to follow as a council, even housecleaning items, and oftentimes, things are pushed through, or they seem like they're being rammed at us. And processes sometimes get overlooked, circumvented for the spirit of efficiency. I'll hear from colleagues and others, like, oh, we're spending too much time on this thing. We need to get it through, and these types of things. And those perceptions really trouble me, because it is our responsibility as an elected official to take the time to process any sort of information that will have an impact on the community. And what my concern is, is there's a lot of processing, there's some misses here and there, but that the perception that we don't appreciate the work. I do appreciate the work. I appreciate the work in the packets. I appreciate the work from planning, from the consultants, everybody that pours their heart and soul into that, whether we pay them or not, as well as staff. Incredible amount of patience that you have to endure with us. I just want to address it that the perception is not, I don't appreciate you, I don't appreciate work, do. It's, I have to respect the process. And if I don't feel comfortable in making a decision on something that's going to have an impact on the entire community, folks that voted for me, the reason why I ran for office in the first place, I'm not going to feel comfortable approving it in the blind. And sometimes that requires pushing things back to a work study, whether it be once or two times. And even in work studies, sometimes our agendas are so packed, we don't have time, as you alluded to. Yeah, maybe a topic came through on a work study, and maybe there was an hour and 15 people with questions. You just don't have it on the agenda. So I just want to make that call out, because my concern is that there's a lack of appreciation for the work that goes into a lot of things that we have to decide on. And I just wanted to address that, because I do appreciate it. But I also want you all to respect that there are some of us that have a tremendous amount of respect in the process, and sometimes that makes things slower. It's not out of not appreciating you, it's just out of making sure that we make the right decision. Because then when we do, we feel comfortable, we move forward, and then we're on to the next thing. Thank you.
Yes, I too appreciate that everyone's got commitment time and energy here tonight, and trying to work and pull in the same direction. I had a couple of things, just I want to acknowledge, sort of fun things. The roundabout at 436th is done and complete, and I think functions beautifully, and is an asset and a wonderful gateway to the city. There was a ribbon cutting at the Tollgate Farm Park Barn, which is an absolutely spectacular agricultural facility that finally received a permit of occupancy from the city, thanks again to the staff and everybody who put that on the ground. There's at least three concessionaires in there actively bringing that place to life, and it's only going to get better and more exciting moving forward. It's a real asset to us. The bathrooms that were both funded in our Trailhead Park and the Dugan Family Park just speak to increasing recreational activities and assets that are coming to this town that continue to make it a premier place to live. And that's, again, a credit to all so many parties and folks. And then there's public works in the sidewalks down Mountain View Boulevard, which you can move sidewalks. It turns out, I think, they look beautiful, and the trees are there and going to grow and persist. And it's, again, just in its own way, I just couldn't be more pleased with how that's progressing. And similarly, right out here, the sidewalk improvements at Melanie Grove is a nice missing link and part of a larger program throughout the city to connect places that we all walk and are lucky enough to get to live. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well done, Heather. That was a rough one. I've been there, and thank you for helping us muddle through that. That was one of the more challenging meetings. Yeah, echo, congratulations to the Class of 2023. I'll give a shout out to my son, Ryan, since he didn't do that. All the parents and the students, great job. That is no easy task. I'd like to thank Mr. Regos. You are the hero in New Side View for the sidewalks. I love the solution. We had a conversation about trying to preserve as many trees as possible while dealing with the issues of the roots and uplifting of the sidewalks. And it was a great compromise. You found a way to address maintenance of trees while still getting sidewalks. Kind of reminds me of a little John Lennon thing, there's no problem, just solutions. You did it. So thank you very much, and it's greatly appreciated, I know, by everyone in Side View. That, pretty much all I have tonight. I will say, Mr. Elwood, thank you for your comments. I really appreciate those comments, and I'd like to echo that. And I will also add to one little bit. We disagree on times, staff. It's never personal. Rebecca, you and I talked about it today. I greatly appreciate all the work you do, and it's fine. Sometimes we just disagree, and that's it. And that's what I expect from seven different members on a council. And when we come together, ultimately, we find great solutions. I appreciate everything this staff does every day. And anytime we disagree, it's just a disagreement. It's never personal. And I think I've communicated that to staff many times, and I will continue to do that. I appreciate everything. Thank you all.
Congratulations again to the graduates. Thank you all for your very hard work, and enjoy the Fourth of July. Be safe, enjoy, and hopefully, the weather will turn in time for us to actually enjoy the day.
So just some mayor pro tem notes. The city is seeking youth applicants between the ages of 16 to 18 for a vacancy on the Parks Commission. So if you know anybody, please have them apply. Applications, packets, and information regarding the position are also available on the city website. Deadline for submission has been extended to June 30th. Reminder to all that North Bend Downtown Block Party will take place on Saturday, July 15th, from noon to 10:00 p.m. This free event features music, performances, kids' zones, food, and a beer and wine garden. To find out about the event, including the music lineup, which features local artist Nick Mardon as the headliner, please visit the news section on the city website. Council, the July 4th City Council meeting will be canceled. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Aye.
Aye.